Here. Do I hear the motion and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of the Clinton Beer Board on September 23rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second and further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, we have a request for a Class B, which is off-premise beer permit for Vana Yaca, 2025 LLC, located at 2228 North Charles G. Severs Boulevard in Clinton. Yes, sir, can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, it's Vaibhav Matha, and the address is 2228 North Charles G. Severs Boulevard.
Where do you live?
Knoxville, Tennessee.
What's your address?
1522 Rich Clamber Road.
Who's going to take this? Roger, you want to talk about this, or Gina, what this is? You're asking for a, so you're asking for a beer permit for the most part. Is it the Shell Station?
Yes, sir.
That's down there?
Mm-hmm.
Have y'all had, are you new owners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how long have you owned the business?
No, we have not taken yet.
I'm sorry?
We're going to take over on 31st.
You take over on the 31st?
31st.
Would that be appropriate to approve if they didn't have ownership?
The business.
Right. Is that normal?
You can make it approved.
Okay.
But you still need a motion before we discuss with the starting date, yeah.
You talking about procedural now?
Yeah.
Johnson, we need to make a motion in a second before you discuss business.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
So you need a motion so we can have discussion?
So she's telling you shut up.
No idea.
I'll make a motion.
Here, motion, motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Now you can discuss.
Now, there's a couple of things that came up. We do background checks on all four of the owners, and I think there were some things that have popped up, that there's some concern around that. Gina, I don't remember all of that. Can you kind of, kind of paraphrase what came up on their background checks?
Just on one of the owners.
Use your microphone, please.
Just one of the owners had an indication of last year of some charges down in Florida. That was theft, an accessory, different things that Chief Campbell might be able to.
Six charges of theft described as petty larceny. That was in March 2024. Those charges proceeded to court hearing, and the disposition on those is what they referred to in Florida as adjudication withheld, which gives them something of an option, or at least alternative sentencing, where the person may be considered as not a repeat offender. And so they are, it's an alternative sentencing for it. They're placed on probation, and when I called today on the charges at the court, they told me that they are sealed, and which apparently is common, that gives somebody a chance without formal criminal record. But it does say what the charges are, but you can't find anything else about them because they're sealed.
And what was the date on this when this occurred?
It occurred on March, March 8th of 2024. And the court action was July 22nd of 2024.
Can you address any of those?
I have no idea.
That was on Patel?
Yes.
If you don't mind, just stating your name and address, please.
Pratik Shabend Patel.
Is this you?
Yes.
Can you kind of tell us what occurred?
Yeah, this was a misunderstanding. I supposed, it's a recurring order. I supposed to pick up and drop, and I thought, it's already prepared, like pre-orders, I thought it's already prepared, and that's my misunderstanding. I make a mistake there.
So is there any way, a process you go back through and clear this off your record?
It's already done. It's already like, the case already like dismissed and expunged. That's from my lawyer. I have a court order that everything is taken care of that.
And when do you think that happened?
It's on the November, I can tell you.
But Jim, what you ran is today.
So I went to their online portal for the clerk clerk in that past county in Florida, and I did not, I put her name, that a bird, and I did not find anything as far as her record. I turned around, I called clerk's office. There's usually has to be something more of a formal request on this, which could take 30 days or more to get back. But what I asked him was, if there was nothing on her record, even though I show it in the NCIC report, would I see it on there? And they said, no, because it's a sealed status. And talking to the clerk that I spoke to, he said that there was a judgment on these charges, but like I said, relative to what Florida does with kind of a, you know, secondary alternative sentencing, that if they don't feel like that it's something that somebody's going to be a repeat offender, first time mistake, that they don't have a formal criminal record per se. So, but they told me that I could send them an email, city email address domain, that I could get some more information off of that, to see if what she's describing, that it is like an expulsion or something, or finalized. But they did say that there was a judgment that was on it.
And you think you can find that out?
Probably, yeah. I sent them the email and request that. I just don't know what the timeframe would be, so it may be.
I must say, since they don't own the bill, they don't own it yet, why don't we just wait to find out what Jim finds out?
Well, you could always make, you know, if we feel like this is maybe a one-time deal to make it, go ahead and approve a contention on Jim, making sure that her record's been expunged.
I only have, it's on November 22nd, and I only have a court order with me.
In your permit application, I'll just, let's verify this. In the permit application, it says, have you ever been convicted of any violation of liquor and or beer laws, felonies, or any crime involving moral perpetuity in the last 10 years? From what Jim had explained to me, these would have been misdemeanor charges, not criminal charges. The only thing that would fit into her case would be the moral perpetuity.
But in her mind, if she thought that those charges had been expunged, then I don't know, did it say charged, or what was the wording on that?
Well, it says any currently pending, charges currently pending, but it also says felonies, beer laws, and none of hers included beer law or liquor. You know, she didn't have, it's not a felony crime that she was.
Yeah, but I think if nothing, if it's been expunged, then there is nothing pending.
Shouldn't be.
So I think she answered that correctly.
Right.
So what's the pleasure of counsel?
I thought I saw a selling to a minor on.
That was past 10 years.
Okay.
That was in 14.
So can we do a motion, contingent upon, subject to? If that makes y'all feel comfortable, because then.
What's the details on the subject to?
That the drops have been expunged.
To verify that.
So it kind of just disappears, goes away.
And they could send us that record too, right?
Yeah, I believe, that's what they told me that they could. I could have more information within that. Usually when something is expunged, it's gone, you know, from a standpoint of, but they told me they could send me what was in there.
I'll make a motion, we approve its subject to getting a letter of expulsion from the
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Now, I will say, as you probably tell, we take this very seriously. So especially selling to underage alcohol, that hopefully you have a good process, and it's very consistent. State laws demands you check everybody's ID, even if they're as old as I am, you gotta check it. So first time offense, I tell this to everybody, it's $1,500, no questions asked. So, but regardless of that, welcome to Clinton, and I hope you all do well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Beer board's adjourned, public hearing, I'm sorry, regular agenda, court order. I won't beat that thing down.
Councilman Quiner, Councilman Foster, Councilman Harold.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Manis. Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? I would like to ask someone to amend the agenda for the auditors to talk about the results for the 2023-2024 year. Is that correct?
Yes.
2324, or 2223?
2324.
2324. And I'd like to move this up right above bullet point number, or point number seven, the recognition of visitors and citizens. Let me speak for that. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Somebody has to make, I can't make the motion for that.
I said so moved.
Rob wants to make, okay.
And this is the motion for the amendment. So any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, I'd like to again, go back to the approval of the agenda. Hear a motion for approval of agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll, later again, we'll be giving the prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. As we begin our prayer, you know, I know I lose, I miss people, you know, as far as passing away here in town, but there were three real good people here in town that we're going to miss. Marty McBroom was the first one, Ron Eschlinger, and Ann Patton, which she did so much for this community, and they will all be missed.
Join me then in a moment of silence. Father, we thank thee for these that have made a contribution to our community, and have made the community of Clinton a better place for them being here. We pray that you would help us to do the same thing, to leave our mark in a positive way, to make this place a better place to live for everybody concerned, that we may make appropriate decisions, and that we may try to do the right thing, that our city may go forward for years to come. Be with us now as we deliberate and as we make decisions, for we do so in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated December 20th, 2024?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, Scott Ray's favorite time of the year. The auditors.
Scott Ray Show.
Do we have a copy?
Good evening, Gary Mitchell.
We haven't seen the copy of this yet, have we?
I have them, I have them. I'll hand them out to you this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, I know why we could have them while he's going over.
Get one for Scott, too. You can go in, you can go in.
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all, and it's good to see you all again. I do thank you all for allowing us to continue to perform your audit. We really enjoy our relationship with the City of Clinton. I know it's been a longstanding relationship, and we do always like to express our gratitude to the fantastic job that Chris and Gail and Scott do, and all the assistance that we get from them as part of the annual audit process. We couldn't, we couldn't get the audit done without their help, and they do a fantastic job. I know you all don't have any copies in front of you yet, but I'll hit some of the high points that you don't necessarily need a copy for, and that is that, once again, we are issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements of the city, so that is the most important thing above all. So we do have a high level of confidence that the financial statements are not materially misstated, so it's a clean opinion on the financial statements again this year. Here they come. I'll wait, I'll wait till you get a copy, so you can see the numbers I'm looking at I'm going to start on page 17 at this point.
Thank you. No, that's all right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, it's fine.
Thank you.
All right, on page 17, this is part of the management's discussion and analysis. This provides a high-level overview of the financial statements, but it also provides comparative information, which is why I like to kind of highlight this information, because it's good to kind of see what happened in 2024 compared to 2023. So again, page 17, you'll see, this is kind of a very high level, all the governmental activities of the city. You'll see total assets in '24 ended up at $52.5 million compared to the prior year, $49.2 million. So that's an increase there, largely due to a lot of capital asset purchases that occurred in '24, a lot of paving and some other equipment and stuff was purchased. Total liabilities were down about $1 million, which is always a good thing. I know the city is very dedicated to paying off their debt, and so that effort is reflected there. And then bottom line, the results of all those changes is that the net position of the city increased by approximately $4 million during the year, so it's a very strong performance there. And if you look at the next page, page 18, you'll see, you'll see kind of what caused the underlying changes during the year. You'll see total revenues of $29.0 million compared to $26.5 in the previous year. Largely, the increase was largely due to strong sales tax collection, property tax collection, but also, since this includes the schools in here, too, there was that change to the funding formula for the schools that brought in a lot of extra funding this year. So revenues were up significantly, expenses were up, too, but not quite as much. Obviously, inflation was still lagging during this timeframe and whatnot, so expenses were up. But the overall bottom line change in that position, as I stated earlier, was a positive $4 million increase in the net position of the city. So another very strong year for the city. And I do like to zoom in a little bit on the general fund, just because that's kind of the most important fund, especially from the city's perspective, not from Scott's perspective, but from the city's perspective. And that's on page 26. You'll see, this is the balance sheet of all of your governmental funds, and you'll see the first column there for the general fund. And at the end of 2024, the unassigned fund balance, which is basically the biggest chunk of the spendable part of it, was $8.5 million, which is down $2 million from the prior year, but is still in a very strong position. It still represents approximately 45% of annual expenditures, so there's lots of quote-unquote rainy day funds there. And then you'll flip, actually, I was going to flip from there. After this, there's all the individual financial statements for the individual funds, and a lot of additional notes here that go into more detail about everything you could possibly want to know about the financials of the city. So I'll skip past all that exciting information that I'm sure Scott's going to go home and read. And go toward the very end, this is our other auditors' reports that we provide. It starts on page 169. This is our report on internal controls and compliance. So this is the additional report that we provide that discusses whether or not we have any findings from this year's audit. So this report on internal controls does mention that we do have two findings in the current audit, one being a significant deficiency, and one being a compliance issue. And if you want the details of those, and I'll go over them briefly, those are on page And so the first finding that we had as a result of the audit was that we noted during our audit that the city had made a duplicate payment of $85,000 on a construction pay invoice. This error was caught by the City Finance Department fairly quickly, and the funds have already been returned to the city, so that's a good thing. That means that the city is maintaining awareness for when these kinds of things happen. Our recommendation here was just that management should implement some policies and procedures to make sure this kind of thing doesn't happen in the future, such as standardized invoice numbers and the accounts payable system, so that you can identify any kind of duplicate invoices or check requests. And I know that the Finance Department has already addressed that, and is trying, and is making adjustments accordingly. And the second finding that we noted pertains to the drug, I'm sorry, the E91 Fund, I'm sorry, Drug Enforcement Fund. The state, the state makes a big deal about any time that there are expenditures in excess of budgeted amounts, and I know the city tries, and the Finance Department tries hard to monitor those kinds of things, but at the end of the year, we did find that there were overspendings of approximately $3,000 in the Drug Enforcement Fund. And again, since the city, I'm sorry, since the state makes a big deal about it, we are required to write it up, even though the dollar amount there is not very significant. And so our recommendation there is just for management to make sure that they are monitoring expenses compared to budget on a real-time basis, and making sure that if there is a need for a budget amendment, that it gets done by June 30th, so that there's not any overspending. So that was it as far as findings from the audit. Chris, did you hand out the piece of paper here, too? You don't have to, I can just go verbally. This is our other report that we give to City Council that just describes the results of our audit. And basically, there's nothing in here that is new, if you all have looked at this in the past. Basically, there was no new accounting pronouncements or policies in the current year, there weren't any significant unusual transactions that we looked at, or that we found. We had a couple of, we had, I'm sorry, one audit adjustment for a small change to accumulated depreciation of $35,000, so not significant from perspective of the overall city. And then we had a couple of uncorrected statements, meaning that these are minor issues that we didn't feel like was necessary for them to correct in the financial statements, one of which being some overaccrual of accounts receivable, which was really just a timing issue. It was about $150,000, I believe it was grant funds that were received late. And then we have in the, for several years, passed on the recording of lease assets and lease liabilities, which is more of an accounting requirement that just states that you put them on the balance sheet, but it doesn't affect the overall cash flows of the city at all. So those are minor, and we have historically passed on making those adjustments. So other than that, this just states we didn't have any disagreements with management at all during the audit. We again appreciate their hard work and their assistance during the audit. And then at the back of this report, there is a copy of the management representation letter that we asked for them to sign at the end of the audit. So that was it as far as prepared remarks. I'm happy to take any questions, if you all have any.
Any questions?
I'll try, since Jim's not here, I'll try to ask some of his questions.
Ask his traditional questions.
Anything that we need to be aware of long-term that concerns you with this audit?
Nothing that concerns me from this audit. The Finance Department, I think you have very, very strong and capable folks at the head of that department, and they are very quick to act upon any recommendations and findings that we have, and so that's a very good thing. We commend them for that. I know they're currently undergoing some personnel transition issues, so just important to make sure that those kinds of things go well, that there's proper segregation of duties that occur, both, you know, before and after that happens, so that there's not opportunities for any kind of theft or fraud or anything to occur. So that would be my biggest thing to look at going forward.
Second question, what page is the debt repayment?
All right, the all-important debt repayment question. So there's actually, there's a couple of different places you can find it. There's a summary on page 68. You can look there, and then there's a little bit more detail in the back of the report on page 141. But the most important thing is the lion's share of your all's debt is expected to be retired by, during fiscal year 2026. That's when the last big million-dollar-plus payment is due. So after that, it's just very small stuff until 2030.
Thank you. Any more questions? 10 minutes exactly.
All right. Thank you all again, appreciate it.
See you next year. Recognition of visitors and citizens? Any comments? Or comments on the agenda items? Communications from the mayor, I want to brag on Recreation Department. I've had nothing but good responses about the pickleball indoors. No major injuries thus far.
One.
Not major, though, is it? What in life?
Probably some emotional injuries, twisted ankle.
Twisted ankle. So certainly appreciate that.
You didn't get that in doing that, did you?
Community reports, Clinton School Board report. Ms. Johnson?
I can't talk on the auditor, so I'm going to let Scott write it off.
She doesn't speak the same language.
Five minutes.
I guess, just to compliment the audit staff, independent auditors, and the internal, the support I get from the school system, I feel like we're taken care of, you know, from Chris and from Pew and Company, so I think everybody's doing a good thing for the whole system, so I'd like to pat them on both on the back. Before you, you should have a budget amendment number two from the Board of Ed. It's pretty robust. I'll go over the highlights for you. We paid a bonus, Board of Ed approved a bonus payment. The majority of the increase in expenditures comes from that bonus payment. There's a few adjustments to various line items to recognize, some grant revenues that have come in, and the related expenditures that it takes to satisfy the grant requirements, but nothing outside of the ordinary, other than that bonus payment is in this budget amendment number two. For the cafeteria, for the federal projects funds, we budget in what's called E-Plan, and that gets approved by the Tennessee Department of Education. The detail of that budget amendment, after the initial approved beginning-of-year budget, that detail is not presented to the Board and to City Council, because it is approved by the Department of Ed. And those grants are reimbursement grants. We apply certain stipulations, we file those stipulations, we spend the money, they reimburse us. And then there's no cafeteria budget amendment recommended at this time, so for your approval or any questions.
Hear a motion for approval of budget amendment number two? So moved. Have a motion in a second, any discussion, questions for Scott? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quiner, Councilman Foster, Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Manis.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, budget amendment number two passes. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Clinton Regional, well, it's going to be, it's going to be Brian now. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Hatmaker.
Let me find my report here. I need to do them in the order, or can I do Board of Zoning? So we'll start with the Board of Zoning appeals. We met on January 13, Monday. Not much business there. There was applicant Steve Blevins, he was requesting a variance to Section 3.8.2.2B of the zoning ordinance to allow a detached garage greater than 1,000 square feet in size. We had some discussion on this. Preston Stokes, the city planner, discussed it's a unique situation because the lot is approximately 16 acres, so it's not a typical city lot. So that was approved and passed unanimously by the council. And then the Planning Commission met on same day, January 13th. Had a couple items on the agenda. Applicant Alan Tadlock requesting final plat approval for property located at 311 Beechwood Lane. This property is Zoned R1. That was passed and approved. Applicant Glenn Fielden, he's requesting a final plat approval for property located at 310 Glendale Avenue. This is currently Zoned R2. That was approved as well. And applicant Joseph Lockamy is requesting final plat approval for property located at 205 Weldon Road. The property is currently Zoned R1. That passed as well. We had some new business. There was a big discussion on the use of digital signatures for certifications on plats. It was kind of a get-with-the-times conversation, so that was approved unanimously on starting that process, and using some platforms to get some digital signatures for efficiency. Also, the use of tablets for the Planning Commission to review, that was also another efficiency item. Not much discussion, it was passed unanimously. The latest discussion was a draft of a corridor district. Matt Widener introduced a draft. Matt Widener introduced a draft of this district and it's essentially, we're looking at our city limits and our entryways into our city and looking at beautification and what that looks like and frontage road and a lot of discussion about it. We initially determined on the draft that it was a little, little restrictive and we wanted to discuss the strictness of the requirements so we can be better for the, the business owner as well as the city. So that'll be an ongoing discussion. We also reintroduced a B1 Central Business District discussion and that's planning for next meeting, so we'll, we'll have more information as that comes about. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Brian?
I think Brian, I was just wanting to reiterate that, that overlay conversation we had with the Fin Commission, that is only for commercial business, not residential. So I think it'd be very beneficial to implement something like that down the road. So how do you do, Larry? You all right?
I thought he did fantastic.
Can we grade him out? You're back next month, Brian.
I figured you'd fix the agenda because it had Gann's name on it.
Well, that's not my job.
I was on there and there.
I don't know whose that is. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Harrell. So they changed Rob's, they changed yours.
As my predecessor would always say, CUB does really good when it's really cold or really hot. So the financials are there if there are any questions there. We had our audit at our last CUB meeting and it was an excellent audit, so it's certainly nice to be associated with good audits with CUB, City Schools and Clinton City Council. And to my knowledge with the recent cold weather we had, there was no power outages and anything to report compared especially to last year as we remember where they were kind of rolling.
You're right.
Yeah, so any questions?
Any questions for Rob?
Yeah, I think it was Knox County that had some rolling blackouts like, it might have just been for a minute or just a couple of seconds, but that's just from an industry standpoint, that's, that's not a good thing, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, before you start, Wendy, do you have anything for Green Macadoo or, are you done your Green Macadoo? Okay, thank you. Oh, you didn't do Green Mac, that's my.
I'm not a tree board.
Anything on tree board?
Good evening, happy 2025. Per your request in front of you, I have some information. You have a list of our Board of Directors and all the officers that are included there. You also have a copy of our budget for 2025. And then the third page, I did an update on the promotional funds that City Council gave us and what those funds will be used for. One thing that we're doing that's new is we are advertising with Style Blueprint. They are an online platform. They have, they get about, sorry, I thought I had in my notes, but they get like 3.5 million views throughout the year. They'll do some articles on Clinton, the downtown area. It's something that our board thought would get the right people to Clinton who would be looking for it. We also, you'll notice that we've allocated some of our promotion funds to be discussed during construction when that starts. We are very excited about the construction starting in downtown Clinton. I want to thank the City of Clinton for their investment in downtown and with it is getting started and our committee is committed to being as helpful as possible in partnership with the city. So please let me know if there's something that we can be doing with that. I did want to let you guys know that East Tennessee PBS chose our foundation as an up and coming nonprofit to highlight. So for the month of February, you'll see a one minute commercial about downtown Clinton. And then at the end of the year, along with all the other recipients of this, we'll get an award for that. We have installed 12 new walking tour signs since I last spoke to you guys, so we now have 49 historical walking signs in the downtown area. And Historic Downtown is getting eight new businesses this year, which is very exciting. Six of those are food and beverage. So we are continuing to diversify our downtown and what it offers and we're very, very excited about that. And as of today, there's another online platform called The Collector. They get 3 million monthly page views and they did a article on the 10 historic towns in Tennessee to visit and Clinton was listed as number six. That's it for me.
Any questions for Catherine?
Catherine, that promo that you're, and you're running for, where's that gonna be shown? Is it gonna be on social media, is it gonna be on TV or?
Which one?
The, the one you first were talking, was talking about.
The East Tennessee PBS?
Yeah, so it's just PBS.
It's on PBS.
I missed the PBS.
Yes, so they came and I did an interview with them and they took videos and did some photos and so it'll essentially be a one minute commercial that runs throughout the month of February. So they pick one nonprofit to highlight for every month of the year and we're the month of February.
Great, great. Thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Howe, can I guess Chris is gonna be doing this?
I can do it, I'm gonna try. Update on a couple of the grant projects at TDOT-TAP Grant. We had our second pre-construction meeting last Tuesday, the 21st, went very well. And we've also planned an informational meeting with the downtown merchants scheduled for Wednesday, February the 12th at 2:00 PM. Right now, construction activities for the water and sewer replacement should start on Monday, the 24th of February. Our grant for the swimming pool, the next day we had a meeting with them on the 22nd with our contractors and since we're kind of getting down to the, the last few months of the project, we wanted to narrow down a timetable. Right now, we're looking at probably eight to 10 weeks for them to finish up with the, the pool splash pad concession. So we're looking at probably first to mid-April, which should, should give us good time to be ready to open for the summer. General Government, in accordance with previous approved practices of council, I respectfully request authorization to file for various grant funds through the state and federal government and other agencies as we, as we become aware of them. This would include but not limited to funds for building renovations, water and sewer improvements, rehabilitation, drainage improvements, infrastructure improvements, special program projects, vehicles, equipment and funding for additional employees.
Here a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I'll defer to Chris for the finance.
All right, thank you Roger. Just first quickly, I want to thank council for taking the, the audit report tonight. I blame having too much notice to get them on the agenda. I completely dropped the ball on that and thank you for, for doing that. Next month they had a conflict, so it was, it was awesome that you guys got them in tonight, so thank you for that. And also if you have any questions on the audit, I'm, I'm happy to answer any of those. So just quickly on the finance report, we're halfway through the fiscal year. We're doing well. We've collected 41.2% of our revenues, just under what we've collected, so you know, so far this time last year. Part of that is attributed to the, the CUB and Lulaw, if you see that number down, the other revenues and transfers, that's a little bit lower than in the previous year and that's the reason for that. We spent about 51, almost 52% of our expenditures and keeping in mind, we also did the, the one time bonus thing and we also have had a few capital expenditures. So we're doing well with keeping the costs down. Departments are, are doing good at monitoring their budget. I'll touch on the sales tax quickly unless you have questions for me on the finance report.
Any questions for Chris thus far?
Okay, so we're out of the, we're, we're out of the.
Clawback.
Clawback that, that the, that the state graciously gave us and we're, we're doing well. We're actually still up, even with that clawback, we're still up slightly from the same time last year. And I can tell you that so far this month, it's, it's going well, knock on wood. So the community is, is strong, businesses are strong, seems to be thriving at this point. Probably should have touched on it in the finance report, the building revenues, all of that, that's, that's up well and, and you know, I attribute that to, to growth and the great job that that department does with how they treat the customers, so.
Any questions for Chris?
I've got a budget amendment, but that'll, I guess that'll come later. Not sure where you want that.
You can go ahead and do that, can't you Roger?
Okay. So it's budget amendment number one for us. Let's see. And mainly what I wanted to address with this budget amendment was getting our capital expenditures funded. I did touch on some, some items that were, you know, easy, easy to spot. You'll have two or three more budget amendments before the end of the year, but I wanted to break it up and, and get the capital done first. We're increasing 41,000 in the area of employee salaries and that mainly deals with separation pay. When someone leaves, we, you know, there's no way to budget knowing who's gonna leave in a year and if someone has a lot of leave, we have to pay out. That, so that explains that. No increase right now in operating expenditures and then in capital expenditures, 289,137.28 and those are for the items you see on there. Equipment, the Ridgeview calming, parking lot, traffic signal, a couple of items there for Public Works and Recreation as far as equipment goes. So the total, total expenditure increases of 330, 524, 64 and those are funded through, are assigned for capital projects mainly. And then approximately 41,000 will come from the unassigned fund balance and 4,4,750 coming from a grant reimbursement.
Here a motion for passage of budget amendment number one. Second, have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Chris, I've got a question on the leave. You said we can't really estimate that. Is there any cap on like, my company will only let us carry over five days to the next year. Do we have any caps on that?
We do, we do. So when someone leaves, the only leave they're eligible to cash out is their vacation or annual leave. And it's, it's 160 hours that you can carry over, so at any given time, you should not have any more than that. I guess it's conceivable if you ended the year barely under 1, 160 and you went through the year and you've accumulated some, you're probably more than 160 because the year hasn't ended yet and you haven't had to, you know, take those. But that, there is a limit. So it's not unlimited that you could have, you know, 1,000 hours of vacation when you leave to get paid for. So a lot of that depends on who it is that's leaving, a higher earner obviously, you know, say 50 hours is quite a lot more than say an entry level person that leaves.
Now, what, can they cash in their, their sick days?
No, sick days cannot be cashed in. They, they carry over for their TCRS purposes and can count toward their retirement time put in.
Any other questions for Chris? Chris, thank you and thank you for a good audit. I think the two, the two findings were very, I mean, Gail probably wouldn't have done them, but I'm joking. They were very, they're very, those are very small. Y'all corrected one before you even did anything, so very good, very good year.
Thank you.
I'm sorry Kelly, I saw that disapproval, I made that comment, I was just joking.
Thank you Kelly.
No, you're doing a great job, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks Chris. Police Department, the police department has updated and revised the record policies and procedures. Last updated in March of 2024, the changes bring the policies in compliance with current practices and is comparable to the Anderson County Sheriff's Office and THP policies. Based on review of the proposal, I would recommend acceptance and adoption of the 2025 record policy.
Motion to approve?
Somebody, second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Roger, do we currently have some that are not in compliance? I'm gonna defer to Chief Kim.
Something that Lieutenant Carl Bailey and I have been working on, we're just trying to be as, as consistent and make sure the policy is understood. We've had a couple of things happen that we've had to address with them and just to make sure that they understand what is fair, what is, what, what we have to rely upon. Sometimes the working together, sometimes when there's complaints against one or the other, what I have to go by, I can go back to is the policy and we're just trying to make sure that is, is clear and concise as possible.
I knew that we'd had some issues in the past, so I was.
Little bit, nothing major, just something that we, we're trying to make sure that, you know, is, is well understood and everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Chris?
I don't think you all voted on the budget amendment. I, I think we discussed it, but I'm not sure we voted.
Can I just go, just ask for budget amendment, budget amendment number one.
We had a motion in a second, we just didn't vote.
Second discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. See, that's what I get for giving you a hard time. I totally forgot, not doing my job.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Roger?
Roger, you'd said the street was supposed to start off February 24th and then my understanding was 22nd.
Well, that's what they told us in the meeting, but we got to look at the calendar, it's a Saturday, we, so we were sure, assumed they meant the 24th.
Cause I've been telling people 22nd.
Well, I had two until I looked at the February calendar, cause I've told several people, even at the Main Street meeting, the 22nd, but then I'm sure that it was starting on Saturday, so.
We'll plug in 24th instead of 22nd, thank you. Anything else for Roger?
Roger, I have two. One is the, you know, when we looked at the terrible fires in Los Angeles, California, they kept talking about no pressure in fire hydrants or no water and I just, you know, how do we stand on that? That's kind of what I thought of in our city, but what, what do we look like if we had some sort of catastrophe?
I could try answering that, but I know Chief Little could probably give a much better answer than me, so, so I'm gonna let him take that one.
Grab that mic.
Jeff?
State your name, Ed.
Two 10 here.
To answer your question, I guess, Rob, things like that could happen to us, maybe way less catastrophic. Anybody that builds up a ridge with the debris, everything falling, leaves, limbs, all that wind, like we saw with Appleburg, that can happen anywhere. CUB has a pretty good system, but as you all are probably aware, it's a very, it's an aged system. I think just this past week where it had gotten so cold and now it's kind of thawing out, they've had about four water breaks here in the last couple of days. So they're scrambling a little bit. It's like I tell our guys when we show up, you're kind of gonna only get what you get when you get there, you're not sure if it's gonna work or not. So we have some things we like to talk to CUB about, like they'll block, they'll lock, put, actually put a lock on the steamer. Well, if it's a major fire, we need gallons per minute and we use four inch holes, which is better than the two, two and a half. So they lock them and I think, and it's my opinion, you would probably have to ask them that they lock it because they're worried that if we flow some heavy water out of there, it's gonna rupture their line. So that's probably a lot of it. They worked good with us in the past. Dan would even tell us he could reroute water if we had something major. He could reroute, reroute water to kind of force it to where we're at. So again, could it happen? Sure, something similar, but smaller scale?
Well, the next meeting I have at CUB, y'all pass those things along as well.
And I think too, CUB has, as Chief Little said, worked with us when we did Harbor Drive a couple of years ago, they put us five new hydrants, I think it was five, five new hydrants on Harbor Drive. We just put a new hydrant on David Road down, we had, we didn't have any on David Road and we had a major fire about four years ago, five years ago. So they put us one halfway down David, but we got to put another one, another probably 600, 700 feet down. And you know, the goal is for ISO is to have, have a hydrant within 1,000 feet of every structure. And, and we're close, but we do have a few areas that we're still a little deficient.
If we showed up and there's no hydrant or low pressure, what, what do we do in those cases? Educate us on?
We just break, we got a 3,000 gallon tanker and then we also have mutual aid with the volunteer agencies and we can do a shuttle service. And pump from a tank.
Does that increase the pressure of like, the fire hydrant doesn't have much pressure? Okay.
Yeah, if it, say we even get up there and it ain't working, we can bring our tanker and set it up, dump the water and then draft out of it.
Okay, thank you.
And as Roger said, there's not many that we're bad on and of course, it's hard to get water with some pressure up a big ridge, so.
I guess my question is on that, is Chief, is, if we need to identify some of these that are, you know, what is it, is it yellow, orange, green and blue as far as the flow of the water?
Red, orange, green and blue. And that's just, that's for ISO purposes, it's like if it's zero to 499, it's red. If it's five to 999, it's orange and it just keeps going.
The, the red ones.
We're not even supposed to use those and we have more red than we've had in the past, not sure why.
I'm just thinking this, you know, my.
I'm just thinking, you know, about happens, if something happened, like when the fair is going on, there's one hydrant down there at the double fences as you're going up towards the ball field, and it's red. That's where all they park all the trailers. I mean, things like that, I think, would be critical.
Well, and we're not supposed to use it.
Well, my question is too for Rob, you can check, if we're not, if they're red, are we still paying for them?
Okay.
Because it's like $50 a month.
Red is the lowest pressure. We pay a maintenance fee of 50 a month.
So 50 a month, if we can identify them somewhere, I know it's a small change, but there might, I bet there might be 40 or 50 in the city that we just can't use. We need, first of all, identify them.
So reds we're not supposed to use.
You can fill up, they'll let you refill, so we could pull down there and refill, but you can't pump off of it.
How many reds do you think we ate?
I would probably be guessing, but I'd say no more than 15, 10.
Well, I would just, I mean, you and Roger can talk about it, but I think we need to identify some of these, I think, I consider critical areas. I mean, I talked to Rob about it, and I'm not picking on CUB. It's just something, we need a partnership some way that we haven't partnered before. And I know other utilities do different things, and some don't do anything, but we're paying rent on that, so we should. That's like we pay for a telephone pole for electricity. Well, our expectation is we get electricity. If you put a hydrant, or you expect to have the water there to service our residents. But to identify those that really need, we need really need water and prove that flow status, or if not, just we just take it out. I mean, I think it'd be very confusing for people to come to a fire and waste those valuable seconds realizing that that hydrant's not working, and we need to do something plain B.
You can use it, you're just pulling from it.
Yeah, and the fire department has a good mapping system. They can pull up, dispatch can tell them where the nearest hydrant is that they can hook to when they're on their way. So they have a good system in place that helps.
I guess my thought is, you know, if there's a problem, let's fix it now and be partners, and that's kind of my thoughts about this. Yeah, and there may not be a problem that needs fixing, but let's at least ask the questions and. The second one is, I did a lot of hiking at Aspire over the holidays, and can't help but notice the sign back there that mentions contact city or TVA. What is the plan, you know, if we extend that to the dog park, how many miles is that? And what kind of cost are we looking at? Are there grants for that? Can you kind of give us an update on that?
The exact mileage, I don't remember. It's further than you think because it's a winding river there. I want to think it's a couple mile trail. Of course, the problem with that is, that's not our property. It's a TVA property. It's part of, and I'm not sure the name of the company out, it used to be DH Compounding. It's part of their property, and then part of it also is in a buffer zone that was put in mandated by TVA, and we put the industrial park in to keep the residents on Eagle Bend from having to look at an industrial park. So there's several issues there with it. Not saying it can't be done. I think there's six creek crossings that are back through there that bridges would have to be built over. In a meeting with TVA three or four years ago, they thought it could be as much as a $2 or $3 million project. Now, taking all of that into consideration, what, I've had conversation with Mike Wallace, with the Aspire Foundation, is there's a possibility of federal funding, and we've kind of, our thought process is that we would support them if we thought we could get this funding to help build it. We'd have to, like I said, work through some hurdles. It's just not as simple as school building a trail because we'd have to get private industry to buy in. TVA, I think, wouldn't be an issue. Since we have acquired six and a half acres from Mayor, former Mayor Kathy Brown, that could help us get around part of that buffer zone, because we were in the process now applying for a grant to actually enlarge the Carden Farm Dog Park. We're not going to put another dog park over there, but it'll be more trails, frisbee golf, some of that stuff, so it should be a passive park. And there's actually a state grant that just opened up a week ago, so we're in the process. And what's good about that grant, the land that Mayor Brown gave us valued at $398,000, we can use that match as our match to get the grant, so otherwise, we can get a, I'm doing my math real quick. Anyway, we can get a, go for a grant, ask for the state for $398,000, and our 50% match would be the land. So it won't cost us anything, but probably some engineering costs. So it's in the works, so there's talks about how it could be done.
Okay, thank you for that update. Any other questions for Roger?
Thanks, Roger. No ordinances. Under resolutions, we have resolution number 845, school vouchers, 2025. Let's go ahead and get a motion in a second, then we'll let, I think Kelly wants to say a couple of words on that.
Here, a motion for approval.
Some move.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Kelly?
I'll be surprised if it's a couple of words.
You give them three minutes?
You all have heard my vouchers spill so many times that I probably don't need to spill it again. Just that the special session has been called that convened this actually today, and this is high on the priority list along with some hurricane relief funding, but the general consensus is, is that he's, we're going to push it hard, and the vote is very, very close. Scott Ray and I had a conversation today, and he's done some projections. And honestly, when you look at a Clinton City standpoint, what it's going to do is we just cannot afford two separate educational systems and maintain quality in both of them. So over time, even though we have a quality school district, and a lot of our children probably wouldn't leave to go to private school, over time, the bucket of money that's allocated to private school is going to significantly decrease, and we've seen that happen state after state. And so we projected that it will just be a few years before we do start seeing a financial impact on Clinton City schools just due to the lack of funding for public education. And so when we look at our exemplary district with three reward schools, it's going to have some hard conversations about how we continue that quality when state funding has significantly, state's funding and support has significantly decreased. So I can answer any questions, but you've heard my vouchers spill for several years now.
Any questions for Kelly?
Well, I want to thank you for kind of leading the way on this. I know some of your messages on social media has gone even throughout the state, and I think it's a testament to your leadership and your passion for this. I certainly appreciate it.
Well, I think, again, we can't say enough that we honor school choice. Parents should have the right to choose what they want to do with their children. But this current system as proposed is very discriminatory against my 18% of Clinton City students that have disabilities and my 30% of students who live in poverty. That doesn't give them any choice. And so I think a lot of the purposeful messaging is mis-messaging because it really is not parent choice. It's not school's choice. It's the school's choice if they're going to accept the child or not. So it has some very major damaging ramifications on our jewel of a public school that we have in Clinton City.
Agreed. Thank you.
Kelly, I was reading through the bill last night, and did I read it correctly that 65% of the vouchers are going to go to those already in private school?
That is correct. So in the fiscal note, they're already preparing fiscally that 65% of the students who get this voucher will already attend private schools. 35% will move from public to private. What we know from other states is that that number is more around 80 to 85%. And then the voucher as proposed, there would be 20 vouchers this first year. The first $10,000, the income is, if you are a family of four and you make $175,000 a year, you would qualify to get a voucher, and then the other $10,000 has no income limits on it whatsoever.
So are they projecting that 65% that more private schools are going to be, become available after the passage? Because you, I guess my impression is most of the private schools are full as of today. So where's this other 30, how's this going to be, the mix going to change?
Correct. Well, I think you'll see some private schools may possibly expand, but you're 65% already, I mean, 65% of the money is already going to seats that are already taken. So will you see more private schools pop up? Yes. But what we normally see then is, like, once the vouchers are implemented, you have a private school, and ironically, within the next couple of years, they've increased their tuition by the exact same amount as the voucher. And that's played out in every other state that has accepted this plan.
So what you see in sports with recruiting, the way it is, you're going to see it in academics as well now in the future.
Oh, 100%. And then what they do, and I mean, it's a free market. If I owned a private school, I would do the same thing. They take that increase, and then they're building massive sports facilities. They're building, you know, things that public schools cannot compete with. And then you, over time, have a system of haves and have-nots, and I think we've been there before, and we don't want to relive that part of history.
Kelly, did I read something about some of this is going to be funded by the lottery money that's now being used for higher education?
So when you look at, when you look at the bill, he's put a little carrot in there that each teacher would get a $2,000 stipend. But then there's also in there, he's put some infrastructure money that would come from the gambling money, that would be the same pot of money as Hope and Tennessee Promise. The thinking, or what they're saying right now is they would use the surplus that is not being used, but as that continues to grow, inevitably, higher ed is very concerned that eventually down the road, this could impact Tennessee Promise and the Hope Scholarship. But that money that is for capital infrastructure for public schools is being reserved for counties that are in distressed counties, which we are not one, so none of the three systems would see any of those funds from the bill.
And that $2,000 stipend for teachers, is this, is that one-time?
Yes, so it's just a one-time bonus only for certified teachers, so that doesn't address our teaching assistants, our secretaries, our custodians, and all of those are key components to the success of our district as well. So what that will end up doing is placing an additional financial burden on our district because we can't treat one group, you know, different than we do another because we're all in it together, and everybody's working hard together for the success of the district.
Anything else? Roll call, please. And this is in support of resolution number 845.
Councilman Quiner, Councilman Foster, Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Maynard.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, resolution number 845 passes.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Keep up the fight. Any old business before us? Under new business, we have an appointment of city attorney, which is Phil Crye, for a four-year term in accordance with the provisions of the CMC Title I, Chapter 4, Section 1-401. Here, a motion for approval?
Some move. Second.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just a question for Roger. You interact with both of these men more of a day-to-day than we do. Any problems you have with renewing or setting these contracts?
I think, you know, we changed this last year to make, before, you know, there was no limit on how long they can serve unless there was an issue, and I think this just allows us to bring it up once every four years in case there is a need for a change. But at this time, I think everything's good.
I would like to say, I know I had heard some discussion, and so I think it's important for us all to remember that when we are representing the city as an attorney or as a judge or a city council or in any way, that we just be careful with our words and what we post on social media because we're being watched all the time.
Don't post on social media.
Don't post is the best thing, but I just think that's a very important thing for us to remember as we move forward.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This is an appointment of a city judge, which would be Mike Farley, to another four-year term in accordance with the provisions of the CMC Title III, Chapter 1, Section 3-101. Here, a motion for approval?
Some move. Second.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
Some move.